So with that and no more hands, item B please.
Item 6B, receive an oral update on the San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center project.
Thank you, and we'll start with the city manager. You can bring in whoever you need to at the appropriate.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, one second as we bring up the PowerPoint.
Hold on, city manager. I'm looking back at the board. There is a gentleman who has the hand up, and I believe it may be for the last item that we just had, so I'm just seeing that now. So, city clerk, can you let him in and make sure he's heard?
Yes, Paul Wapinski.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us? Yes.
Yeah, it's about the issue that's going to be discussed on the next issue. If you want me to wait, I'll wait.
Okay, about the rack item update?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. You're quick. So yes, I'll keep note of that, and as soon as we're done, we'll certainly turn it right to you. City manager.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. I have the pleasure of providing an oral update on the aquatic and recreation center with a number of our consultant partners that have been working on the project. As the community knows, bringing this vision to reality has been years in the making, and at the beginning of 2021, we are excited to be approaching groundbreaking and demolition. And so without further ado, we will provide the city council and the public with an update on where we are. And so we will talk about design, we will talk about project management, project schedule and budget, and then we'll have questions. And so I will turn it over first to Don Merz from Group4, who has been our designer on this project. And so Melissa, can you make sure she and both Kelly Biggs from Good City Company, who will join in the presentation, are in a room. And so, Don, I'm not seeing you right now. But you're here. Okay, so Don, I will turn it over to you, and please begin.
All right, excellent. Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Don Merkis with Group4 Architecture, my pleasure to be able to give you the update tonight on the San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center. Looking at the view that's on your screen right now, you can, oops, this is really looking across City Parkway at the new community hall back towards Crystal Springs, where the eucalyptus trees are in the background there. This is looking into the community hall on the second floor and the classrooms on the first floor. Looking beyond that, you'll see the entry trellis, which designates the entry into the two-story volume of the lobby, and then behind that, you can actually see the group exercise room. And then beyond, as you move, start moving up the hill, there's our public plaza with our flag, existing oak tree, and the stadium seating that goes up into what I'll call the nadatorium, the nadatorium lawn there. And the next slide, please. So just to give you reference from what is there today, up at the top of the screen, we have Crystal Springs. You can see as City Parkway turns into the park, you have a combination of the onsite parking with the creek which runs through that culvert as it reconnects to the underground culvert, the existing recreation center, and then the existing pool. And so this is just all reference as we go to the next slide. And here we've overlaid the improvements that are planned for the new recreation center. As you can see, coming in off Crystal Springs at the entry to City Parkway, we have separated the parking away from City Parkway with its own entry and access. We have also taken the creek and separated it out of the drive and realigned it through the park to connect to the culvert at that new location indicated there. As you go closer to the recreation center, you can see our public plaza where we have the existing oak tree, and it creates a lovely place for all different events for the community to host there. We have an existing redwood tree that is at the secondary entry that goes into the nadatorium lobby. And going up that stadium seating, as we start moving up the site, you can see we have the lawn that we'll call the nadatorium lawn that really complements what's going on inside the building there. So to the next slide. One of the things that was approved last spring was the exterior color and material palette, and this was reviewed by the ARC and had really positive feedback. We're looking at using an exterior insulation finish system, and you can see the palette really is directly related back to the community input that we got in 2018 when we asked the community what design values they wanted to see in the new building. And so really, it's inspired by nature, warm tones. We're using a natural stone veneer as our accent, and then we're complementing that with a little bit darker color on a window mulleons and then wood look trellis at the entryway. And moving a little bit further down City Parkway, kind of standing back by the creek, looking back to the building, you can kind of see the three parts to the building from the community hall spaces on the right, the lobby with the gym clear story windows raising up beyond that, that's the gym's roof popping up there, letting natural light into the gym. And then we have the group exercise on the second floor with staff on the first floor, and then the nadatorium further up the hill. And you can see how we use that accent stone to designate the entry and the community hall. And then as we go to the next slide, we'll move up towards the nadatorium. And you can see how we've also again used the natural stone to accent the volume of the nadatorium, really accenting where we're letting the daylighting in on this corner. We have a large opening. It's a garage door, glass garage door that opens up and allows that indoor-outdoor connection that is going to be so lovely at the site, allowing people to come in and out with an enclosed deck on this top level. The two other rooms that complement the nadatorium on that lower massing are the two-party rooms. That really is a lovely complement to the activities that are happening in the nadatorium. And then again, the same clear story shed roof that pops up to let the natural light into the gymnasium, you see here on the nadatorium as well. So really bringing natural light into the large spaces, that north light, it will be through translucent glazing to control glare as well. Next slide. So one of the things we've been working hard with staff and the advisory committee is moving into the inside of the building and doing the material and color palette selection for the interior. Our advisory committee has been guiding us in this selection, and this shows you what the main lobby will look like, looking back from the reception desk, back towards the community hall and the classrooms. You can see the stair that goes up to the second floor, which is directly complemented by an elevator on the left side. Again, you can see the transparency of the building, bringing that indoors and letting that outdoors come into it, the color palette using the wood and our vertical wood slots here or slats here, and then polished concrete floor. And then for the steel, using a nice warm green, which is accented by a warm gray. Next slide is just fine. And then moving up to the other secondary lobby at the nadatorium, again, using our wood slats, both vertically and horizontally as an accent material, polished concrete, and then the warm gray. Just to the left that you can't see here is the redwood tree, the existing redwood tree that we're using as kind of a landmark for the secondary entry. And what else you can also see in this view is the the structural framing that we have in our cross framing here. And this is one of the things that we have discussed with staff and looked at using a little upgrade in our connection. So instead of using a less aesthetically pleasing connection for the structural members, we're actually using pin connections on these members, just so that we can allow that transparency from space to space and from inside to outside. Next slide, please. Now from the nadatorium, we're looking back to that glass corner that we looked at from the outside, where we have the glass garage door that opens up and allows people to move inside and outside. We have the two glazed entries that go into the two-party rooms that complement the nadatorium. And then up high, you can see just as the clear story window is starting here, the first angle of it, it actually continues all the way around behind us as blazing is aimed towards that north light. And then we also have on the second floor transparency from the cardio room, looking down, separated by glazing into the nadatorium. So a lot of interconnected spaces with blazing throughout the building, as well as from indoors to the outdoors. And again, this color palette is something that we've been working with the advisory committee on, and specifically in the community hall, which is on the second floor of the community center side of the building. The advisory committee gave us some really good input, suggested that we use the wood floor that you see here. It's an oak flooring. And one of their good insights was to make sure we use a patterned flooring that will not show wear and tear and will be easily maintained over time. So using the wood slats as our vertical and horizontal accent, transparency out to the creek. That tree canopy that you see in those windows is going to be the trees that are out there aligning the creek and is going to create this magnificent backdrop to this space. The bottom image on your right actually turns around and looks to the second half of the room where the catering kitchen is located. And then moving on, additional comments and recommendations came from the advisor committee in the finishes and the patterns of the restrooms. What you hear is, see here is a sample of the community hall restrooms up on the second floor there, and they show really kind of a nice refined palette, very timeless and easily maintained. Next slide. The group exercise room, showing our athletic wood flooring. You can see how the structure does show through. So one of the important things was that our connections be clean and attractive. Transparency out to the street, as well as with peekaboo windows on the far left side, which you can look back into the lobby, as well as back to the running track, which is on the left side of the wall that you cannot see here. Next slide. So that is my summary for this evening, and I think I get to hand it over to Kelly, who is going to give you an update on the work in progress and the sequoia and nipa. Happy to answer questions afterwards. But with that, Kelly?
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'm Kelly Beggs, Contract Senior Planner with Good City Company. And as Don mentioned, I'll be going over some of our current work in progress. I could go to the next slide? Perfect. This slide presents work in progress during the current phase of the project in which the team is developing and reviewing construction documents for the project. The building permit plan check drawings were submitted on July 1st, with the second submittal being submitted within the next week. Pre-qualifications for general contractors were advertised twice, and questionnaires were due to the city at the end of July. The city received eight pre-qualification submissions, five of which met requirements. The internal steering committee has been meeting weekly, and the design team has also been holding technical meetings with individual departments on an as-needed basis. Advisory committee meetings have also been occurring quarterly, with multiple meetings being held in September, and foundation meetings, Parks and Rec Commission meetings have also been occurring regularly. And then lastly, we're happy to provide this update to council tonight. Next, I'll move on to our agency permitting efforts. As part of the environmental impact report prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, we are currently implementing the project's mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan. This plan outlines actions that the city is required to take to mitigate potentially significant environmental impacts, and that includes agency permitting related to relocation of El Zanjin Creek. As you may recall, the creek is being relocated out of the public right-of-way. It currently runs behind parking stalls on City Parkway, and that's to improve pedestrian and vehicular safety, as well as to accommodate the new parking lot and road realignment. So to do that relocation, permits are required from the Army Corps of Engineers, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. All of these permits were submitted in August and early September, and staff and consultants are currently coordinating with agencies on those applications and comments. The permitting process with the Army Corps is the most complex as it triggers review under the National Environmental Policy Act. The Army Corps has jurisdiction over the creek as it is considered to be waters of the United States, but the scope of their review does include the entire project, not just the creek relocation. As described in the project's environmental impact report, the Veterans Memorial Building is considered to be a historic structure that is eligible for the state and national registers of historic places. And because of the demolition of that resource, the Corps must conduct something called Section 106 consultation with the State Historic Preservation Office to evaluate impacts to historic buildings and any other historic resources affected by the project. What we've also been asked during the Army Corps review process is to conduct some additional exploration for potential archaeological sites within the project vicinity that could be eligible for these historic registers. So staff and consultants have quickly mobilized to perform testing in the project area, and we have been able to clarify that there are eligible sites in proximity to the project. We have determined that those sites would not be adversely impacted through project construction. And part of ensuring that there would not be impacts, we will be including tribal and archaeological monitors that will be required to be present during certain stages of construction to ensure that none of these resources are disturbed. So moving on to the next slide, I believe I get to hand this back over to the city manager.
Perfect. So I'll pick it back up here, and Don and Kelly and to the entire team, thank you for everything you've been doing. And that was a very, very quick overview of hours and hours of work that has been occurring literally every week. So thank you very much. And so, council, what I'll walk you through is now the schedule and the budget. And so what does all this mean? And so our prior schedule, we were looking to break ground in January 2021. The honest answer is that has been pushed back due to the continued work with the Army Corps of Engineers and some of the regional permitting bodies. And so we're currently projected to break ground in March of 2021. That said, with that delay, the city team and the consultant team have been strategizing because time is money. And so we are continuing the process of going, finalizing the design package and going out to bid, and we are projecting that to occur in December. And so we are continuing to move forward and like always, adjusting on the fly. But as we'll see in a little bit, additional time does equate to additional money. And so where are we with the project budget? So as the council and the public will remember, sort of back in June 2018, the initial project budget was $50 million. And there was a number of value engineering that actually brought the budget down to that. The grant that is coming to the city from the San Bruno Community Foundation is $50 million. And really, back in both 2018 and 2020, we had a hard reality to swallow, which is the building that the community wants, that the community envisions, and frankly, just to replace a lot of what we have now, cannot be accomplished by $50 million. And so in May 2020, we came to you with a budget that was value engineered down and separated out a base building from some ad alternatives. And so the base building was $60 million. That included adding a enhanced community lounge and an elevated walk-in track, as well as additional cost increases for project contingency and escalation. A number of the things, a number of items actually came out of the budget at that time. One of the things were additional improvements to the park that were initially envisioned, frankly, just because we could not afford them. Other things were done, such as moving some elements, for example, creating additional parking spaces near Tomlark Field, was moved out of the direct project construction budget and advanced through work that the Public Works Department is doing. And so while it will be paid for by the project budget, we are actually saving money by doing that sooner and not as a sub under the general for the building. And then we pulled out a few alternatives. One is the outdoor pool. That is a significant benefit to the community. It also includes a zero-deck entry splash pad and a generator. And so that was pulled out and cost $3.4 million. And so the total back in January of 2020 was $63.4. And as you'll see in the next slide, that number has increased by $4 million. And so the base building now is projected to cost $61.4. There are a number of additional project items, $2.8 million, that were envisioned but are funded by other sources. And so we'll talk a little bit about those. And so those have now been added to the project budget, but it's important to note that they're not added costs that have not been accounted for. Another important note on this additional project work, again, value engineering the building because unfortunately, with what it costs to construct now, we cannot afford the full photovoltaic system or the solar panel system. And so we are providing all the wiring and the design to add solar panels later in the future, but we are working with other partners to hopefully attain grant funds or fund that as a later phase. But it's important to note that Phase 1 does not include actually installing the solar panels on the roof or other equipment because the plan for solar also calls for solar in some of the parking lots. And the enhanced amenities came down just about $200,000 to $3.2. And there's a very detailed model that we went through with the advisory committee and staff has worked on. But top-line summary, from May to September, there's an increase of $4 million. And so let's talk about that, right? Where does that additional cost come from? Now, one, in the model, there's a lot of up and downs. And so what we wanted to call out here, some of the key elements that increased. One is what was added to the budget is this work funded by other funds, sort of related to the project, but not funded by the project. We'll talk about that. Expanded fitness and cardio room, there was empty roof area adjacent to the fitness and cardio room, and we were able to, in the design, almost double the size of that room, providing more equipment, more space, a better atmosphere for the users at a cost of $500,000. Yes, a significant cost, but something that you have to do today if you're going to do it. And the team and the advisory committee really supported that, given that additional roof space that was not going to be utilized in the initial design. There increased plan check fees of just under $600,000. Yes, this is a city project, but we have to pay permit fees. Your staff is looking into ways to get that number down lower, but that has been added to the budget. There's additional work for the environmental processes, $285,000. The four-month increase in construction has added approximately $550,000 to the budget, and those pin break frame connections, $221,000. And so again, there's been up and downs in the model, and since we last came to you, we're up $4 million, and this breaks down a total of $5 million in additional costs. So knowing the model between a number of the ins and outs, there was a million saved. And so highlighting really quickly for the council, what are those additional items that are funded by other sources? A significant number are water and sewer projects. With the relocation of City Parkway or the realignment of City Parkway, we do need to replace the water and sewer mains that run in City Parkway. And essentially, what we're doing is advancing the replacement of those pipelines that will be funded by the sewer and water pipeline, the sewer and water project funds. Next is a traffic signal or roundabout, or potentially another traffic calming measure. And this is at the intersection of Crystal Springs and Oak, an intersection that everyone in the community knows well, that even has some traffic challenges today during AM and peak commute hours. And so a larger building will, yes, add more traffic, and that triggers, looking at doing something about this intersection. And so we're looking at a traffic signal or roundabout, and we are projecting to fund that through our normal traffic calming and traffic funds, potentially Measure A or gas tax. And so that is called out at a total of $800,000. Sitting at fiber relocation, we do have fiber that runs underground and that not only powers our rec center, but also powers our senior center, and this project will trigger the relocation of that. And so that's a cost of approximately $155,000. And then council will remember, we allocated from the City Art Fund $50,000 to relocate the Flame Memorial Structure that currently sits on a part of the park that will undergo construction, and we're relocating that to another part of the park. So that's the $2.8 million in costs attached to the project that are funded by other sources. The next question you may have, well, what does increase in cost, what contingency do you have in the budget? And I won't go through all of these in details, but the point of it is to let the council know that we do have significant contingencies built into this budget, and not only for the design work that is still yet to be completed, escalation, because when we buy a piece of drywall, a year and a half or two years from now, it'll cost more than what we're projecting, and we are reflecting that throughout the entire model. There's an empty line item or line item that's not filled in yet because we've had a number of conversations on will there be additional COVID-19-related costs to the project that we need to budget for? We have not made that decision yet, but that's there just as a flag that it may be there in the future. Corporate yard parking, that project has some contingency built into it. We have contingency on those projects that are funded by other funds. And then like every project, there's a contingency on hard construction costs, as well as FFNE fixtures, furnitures, and equipment. So know that this full budget includes fully furnishing the building, not just building the shells, so all of the tables, chairs, and equipment, IT infrastructure, computers, desks, tables, et cetera, is fully covered in the budget, as well as other contingencies. So know that we are building a robust budget to account for contingencies. And so top-line summary, where are we? And so this table breaks down Phase 1. And so to bring the community the Phase 1 building, and that's essentially everything outside of those enhanced facilities, we have a current gap of $3.7 million. What's shown in the table is we currently have the $50 million from the foundation. Currently, we have $3.1 million in park and loo funds, and we are anticipating development-related community benefits to come to the city council for approval later this year. That will provide $4.5 million to the project, and that leaves a $3.7 million gap that we need to still find and fund for Phase 1. The other work is fully funded, and then we have our enhanced community facilities, that is the $3.2 million. And so there's currently a gap that your staff team is working hard to fill and come to you with solutions for, and so we will continue on that work with rightly. What's on the screen now is a high-level summary of potential avenues to close that gap. One of the things we can do is issue debt, whether it's $5 million or $10 million. We have figures there for what that estimated annual payment will be if we took on 15-year debt. One of the things that I'll tell the city council and the community, given the revenue sources that are coming to bear on this $67 million project, if if the money that we have to put in is ten million dollars or even five million dollars in debt, we're doing pretty good to get a facility of this magnitude for the community by taking on, you know, five to ten million dollars in debt, if, if that's what's needed. We also are tabulating residual P G N E settlement funds. And we believe that there is likely one and two million dollars as we close out that project that can be brought to bear, subject to council approval on this project. We have P G N E undergrounding credits that we may apply to the project, again, subject to council approval that we'll bring forward to you. As we know, there are additional community benefits for some projects that have been approved, other projects that are in the pipeline. And we can talk about either partial or full funding of the delta with those community benefits as well as development impact fees for projects that are adopted and some projects that are very much in the pipeline, as well as seeking a Measure K allocation or loan from the county and a potential allocation of Measure G. Put there as the last item on purpose because it is the last item we're going to. And so top line summary, summary is we have levers to pull. We are continuing to work on this. Given where we are, it will likely take issuing debt for that gap financing, even if we do decide that we're going to use a combination of strategies, development impact fees or community benefits. It's worth noting that when the city adopted your robust development impact fees, community facilities are a line item in those development impact fees. And so those are meant to pay for projects like this. And so we are working on this. And as we approach construction, we'll come to, to the city council with a full financing plan for the building to return, to, to build this asset for the community. And right now it is our mission to present council with the plan to build the entire building, both phase one and phase two at the same time. Again, subject to your approval, largely a reflective, a reflection of accomplishing the full community vision and also realizing it's cheaper to build it today than to, than tomorrow. And so if we're going to proceed down this step, doing it today is much cheaper, knowing the escalation that we will certainly see in the future. You know, the last thing I'll say before I close out is we are also working on a business plan for the facility to ensure that the facility operates where we are not operate, operates at, at a appropriate level to where it's covering its cost, albeit with some subsidy, because every, every recreation department has some subsidy built into it. And we currently have a subsidy within our recreation department. You can't be in the pool business, the public pool business and not have a subsidy. And so we are taking a look at the current subsidy that has been budgeted and building a business plan upon that to make sure that we can operate this facility in the manner in which we know the community and the council expects. And so that concludes our update. And again, thank you to the entire team that has been work, that has been working on this. And we are here for any questions or comments from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. And the city clerk, if we can, Mr. Wapinski in, he's impatient and appreciate it. And if there's anybody else.
Okay, Mr. Wapinski, I am bringing you over now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for letting me speak. I just got a couple of comments. First off, you know, we're going to have this rec center that's going to have, you know, multiple pools and locker rooms, weight rooms, exercise area, shower rooms. Because government moves at such a small pace and obviously the, listening to the brief, the, the costs are kind of exponentially going north. You know, we, we don't adjust rapidly enough. You mentioned, but not provided any specifics on what's being done to mitigate COVID or future viral issues. So we don't spend a whole lot of money on something that may be unusable. I mean, it's unlikely, but it's possible, you know, do we have a plan B? And then my last thought is to cover the shortfall, maybe you can market the naming rights to cover, you know, like YouTube or Walmart dot com rec center. That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Is, is there anybody else from the community that wishes to speak? If so, if you could raise the virtual hand, we appreciate it.
I see no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to council for questions or comments, please. Councilmember Mason.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to ask, I guess, a couple of questions. I think in, in walking around, it's clear that some of the community isn't aware of the magnitude of the location. And so I was hoping that maybe Don, who has been working on this since I was attending as a resident, these meetings, could let us know in comparison to where the rec center is today and the pool is today, how far is that new center going to cover that, that space?
If you go back, I don't know, Jovan, if you can share the slides. But we actually, one of the reasons we wanted to show that existing slide is you can see where the existing rec center is in relation to the street where the school is across the way. And now if we go to the next slide, you can see that our new building basically sits on top of the existing building and then extends up towards the ball field. And so it does extend along the backside of the park there. But when you look at what's being opened up in the park, it is significant. So from that existing pool that is kind of in the middle of the park and has the fence around it and assists visual barrier. With the new plan, when you push the building and the pool together, the footprint does not become that much larger, but it's all contiguous along the backside of the park. We are opening up the entire park and the continuity and the connections in the park are going to be much improved by consolidating the building together along this backside.
Great, thank you. And then could you talk a little bit about the idea for the, the, the little like theater amphitheater stage?
Yeah, yeah, it was great. We were actually talking to the Lions last week and they were talking about, you know, how are we going to do our pancake breakfast for the Easter egg hunt? And where can different events happen? And so along the front of the building in that public plaza where the existing oak tree is, S W A, our landscape architect, has designed this beautiful plaza that's going to be able to use for community events. It's really designed with some stadium seating that goes up to the pool deck level, which is about four or five feet above the plaza level. So you'll be able to kind of use it informally as seating space or program it formally for recreation programs or use it for community events that can just spill out from the building out into the plaza and out into the park. And so on that site plan, I don't know if Jovan can kind of zoom into that on your screen, but that existing public plaza that has been designed by S W A is going to be a fabulous amenity for the community and really tie into a lot of the events that you're already using in the park. And then the relocated gazebo is going over to the opposite side and it's going to provide kind of the counterbalance to activities that could happen on your large events. That's that dashed outline right there is the placeholder for the new gazebo.
Great, thank you. Very, very exciting. My next question is for our city manager. Thank you, Don. Jovan, I, I'm, I guess with the budget, it seems like it's been obviously increasing, but I would almost say fleeting. At what point are we going to, I don't, I'm, I actually am probably going to request it as opposed to ask when it would happen. But I just feel like we need to get to a budget that we are going to stick to because we're now three months away from the originally anticipated groundbreaking day. And so I understand that this has been delayed, obviously because of COVID. But at what point are we going to get to a budget where the contingencies I see are built in? And I think the last time we received this, it was sixty three point five million. And now we're looking at almost sixty eight million dollars. But like to get to a point where we have a, a budget that we're really trying not to go over.
Right. So thank you, Councilmember Mason. A, 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 a very valid question. The answer is a couple of folds. What I would say, beginning from the outset, the number of fifty million dollars was picked because that was a number that was thought to be an appropriate amount out of the seventy million dollars that went to the foundation. The fifty million dollar number really had no reflection to what it would cost to build the building that the community envisioned, right? And so it's not until you get into the design and start to have projections on what the cost is. And we're looking at, you know, almost a thousand dollars a square foot when you, when you build in all the contingencies. And then we begin to value engineer. And there were a number of things that honestly were left on the cutting room floor and, and talked about with the advisory committee and a number of the various staff, staff groups. And, and so part of the truth is we're not able to build what we first envisioned with sixty seven million. I think the other answer to your question is, well, how did we get from sixty three to sixty seven, a four million dollar increase? Well, part of that two point eight million or nearly three million dollars of that four million dollars is actually funded in that it's from things that were always envisioned to be a part of the budget, but were going to be funded by other sources. And so now they have been appended to the budget. And so I, I think that's a important thing to note when we talk about the budget increase, right? Because it really hasn't increased a full four million dollars in money that we need to find from May to September. Part of that is representation. So I, I think that, that, that point is key to make. The other point is absolutely time is money. This is a very detailed model that has been, not just by staff, but by consultants, our construction management firm and people that have very good estimates on what it costs and what bids other agencies have been getting. The reality is we won't truly know until we go out to bid in December and, and get those bid back, those bids back early twenty twenty one, what the true cost of build is. And we've already value engineered a lot out of this building and have a contingency plan built in because we have a phase one and a phase two. And so we are approaching the end point of design and there are contingencies built in with the design budget where as they final, finalize designing items, the money will come out of contingency and it will go into construction or it will go away and the price will go down. And so we're getting there, understand it's a very, very long process. Understand, you know, anytime you're building these facilities, the numbers always increase. And we're not taking that lightly. Know that we are doing everything we can to get the estimated and projected cost of this building down. And we'll know when we go out to bid. With regard to COVID nineteen, it was said that, you know, do we have a backup plan for COVID nineteen? Know that there are a lot of conversations with regard to the business plan that is factoring in COVID nineteen. But we are also looking at a twenty two to twenty four month construction cycle. And so the effects of COVID nineteen, no one knows. But we, we're, we're forthrightly hoping that as a, as a society, we'll, we'll be in a new place when we plan on opening this building in twenty twenty three.
Okay, so I don't know that we want to address this today, but I, I do want to just reiterate, I think we need to get to a budget that we don't want to pass. I just, I'm really uncomfortable with the amounts going up. I, I will say that, you know, in comparison, the park that was built in Burlingame cost over almost fifty million dollars. So I do understand that the cost is high, but I think with COVID, I'm also seeing that it's possible that construction costs may, may go down depending on where the demand is. And then obviously that's kind of counter with, counter weighing, counterbalancing, I should say, with all the fires happening and then there's going to be new building needed there. So I'd be curious to see where that's going. But I do just want to reiterate, I think we need to get to a point where we say this is going to be the budget where we are doing everything we can to not pass it. And I just haven't seen any number that we're not trying to pass. I also wanted to ask about the five hundred thousand dollar delay. So because of COVID, this, I know park and rec services are, have slowed down, but everyone's working to get, you know, everything's virtual and I think they're doing a great job. But my question around the five hundred thousand is how are, how are we at half a million dollars for actually delaying a project?
So that is additional consultant services related to going through the environmental process that has been extended. And so it's not a delay. And there, there's another cost increase for the expanded schedule, right? But what you're talking about, that's actually consultant costs to go through the environmental process and the additional bores and things like that.
Okay, so would that have to be paid anyway? So is it, is it not necessarily related to the delays, what I'm asking?
Right. It, it will have to be, it has increased due to the extended review period. But yes, it has to be paid.
Okay, great. And then just one, one more, I think it's more of a comment. But I, I think that while, while it seems, you know, that this is moving and I'm excited about it and everyone's working together to get, hopefully break ground in the spring, I do get a little concerned when I start seeing items being taken out of, I heard develop, the development impact fees. Because we do have so many other needs, including the fire department and the library. And so I just hesitate to put all of our money in one basket, if I may say that. This is going to be a great project. I think it's going to be beautiful. But to hear that this money had been allocated in advance and I don't remember that when we approved the budget, I do get a little concerned because there, I think every council member probably has different projects that they maybe anticipate money being allocated to. And, and I don't know if what you said means that all these other projects are just going to be waiting because it sounds like, from what you're saying, all this money is going into this particular project. So it's, you can, you can respond, but I, I do get a little hesitant because the development impact fees in particular, and I think I've heard before, the park, the park fees which are associated. I mean, we do have other parks also that need maintenance. And I don't know if those are just going to wait while we build the aquatic center.
Understand the question, right now, tonight, we're talking in the bathroom because we're only talking about this one project. So I, I understand the intent of the question. And so when we come back with the full financing plan for this building, I think what you're articulating and the other members of the council will be interested in is if we use money for this project, what does that mean for other projects? And, and we can certainly bring back that information. At a top line level, we, with the projections that we have, the intent is not to use all of our available funds for this project and not to have anything available for anything, anything else. So, but, but we'll bring back the details, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just want to reiterate my support. I know that costs have gone up over the last seven years. It's gone up in construction and every, everything else we can, we could have anticipated. But I, I really look forward to seeing this actually break ground. Thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation, everyone. I'll, I'll start off with, I understand budgets move, things get delayed. Environmental could be very expensive, so I, I get that. So we're, we're, we have a moving budget that's going up, we're trying to control it. When are we going to finalize the funding mechanism? What, what, what is the schedule to do that work? Or approval from the council? When are we going to get it?
So we are aiming for January, the end of January twenty twenty one. And that's what we will be working toward, or that's what we are, we are working.
It's, it's a schedule. I heard that there were, let me make sure this is right. So we have eight pre-qualified bidders on this project already?
Yes, there was Kelly Bates, perfect, take that.
Yeah, and I'll hand it over to. Yeah, um, and I'll hand it over to Lance Solomon or to Jimmy Tan, if there are detailed questions, this is a little outside of my area. But yes, um, we received five qualified out of the eight, um, pre-qual, uh, submittals.
So we have five pre-qualified, eight total applications.
Correct.
Are those names available for the public to, to, is it on the website? Or, or have we started vetting those? Well, we had to be qualified, but just to know who, the quality of the contractors, the builders, it'd be nice, I think, to share that information if it's, if it can be shared.
Lance or Jimmy, could you respond to that question?
Sorry, yes, sure. Um, we do have a list of pre-qualified contractors. Um, there is a, you know, um, a qualification, uh, uh, a document that they had to fill out, and the, all the contractors were vetted through that process. And so there are, you know, as Kelly mentioned, there are five contractors that have been, um, you know, deemed to be, you know, qualified. And, you know, we do have a list of all of them, you know, I know, Amero, so, you know, BHM, you know, Lethrop, Over, and Swinerton. So, um, we can, we can, you know, post this, um, the list, you know, on the city's website. That's, that's not an issue at all.
Great, I just out of curiosity, and just kind of, you said a couple of names I was familiar with, so it's good hearing those. Um, so thank you for that, uh, that que, the answer for that question. Um, just had a, a couple, two questions about the actual rec center. Um, if, if we are going to go ahead and do the pool, outdoor pool, so the schematic that we're showing, the, the bird's eye view of that, it shows it as a grass area, but the location of that outdoor pool is still on that western side?
Yes. Yes, and we did not have a, uh, image of that in this slide deck, uh, but in prior, uh, slide decks we have, and so we can send that to the city council.
Okay, nope. That's great. And, and the community hall space, uh, for, for somebody that had a party, and they were dancing, the capacity is X, and if they were going to have a sit-down dinner, the capacity is what? Approximately.
Perfect, Dawn.
Um, yeah, for sitting at round tables, for like banquet seating, um, with space for head table, it's a hundred and fifty seating. If you do a combination of like cocktail, stand-up, uh, dancing, um, you know, you can almost, uh, probably increase that by fifty to sixty people. And then if you want like an assembly where you're looking at having a presentation or something, uh, probably two-seventy-five to three-hundred.
Okay, thank you very much. I look forward to, uh, this project like, like everyone else, and, uh, uh, thank you for the presentation.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I also have concerns about the budget. It's a twenty percent variance on a, on a project, and when we undertook this, it was a fully funded, uh, project with dedicated funding, and so everybody felt pretty good about moving forward. And now that we're in a different financial situation, these variances, of course, um, take on a whole different dimension. And, uh, you know, looking back at, at a similar project that we recently completed, uh, with the reconstruction of the Glenview neighborhood, I know there were a lot of, uh, additional things that we, that we added on there because it seemed appropriate, and, and I, I, I don't disagree that they were appropriate, but we, we added on a lot of things, and the project grew, and it grew to the point where we exceeded all our initial, um, estimates on, on what it would cost. And it, uh, when it was all said and done, we, I, I, I think we were all surprised, but all along, we kept agreeing to add this little thing here and this little thing there. And somehow it, it, uh, it got away from us. There, there was a little bit of scope creep. And, uh, I, I understand that costs are going up, and there are some, um, unavoidable delays that are also running up the costs. Uh, but I also know that there are some things that we've added here. And, uh, you know, we, I, I, I don't believe we initially considered, uh, what would happen in the surrounding area with the realignment of the creek and, and with moving the parking lot. I think the initial estimate really only looked at the construction of a building. And all these other things are definitely important, and they all complement this whole thing, the traffic circle, all of these things, but they are additional things that we've sort of thrown on top of this. And so, uh, one of my questions would be, if we were to decouple some of those things from this project, could we get back to something that's more like our original budget? And also potentially avoid some of the delays, especially around what the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers do. Any, anything related to the environmentals of the creek, if we were to decouple that and say, that will continue to happen on its own track, but separate from the construction of the building? And would we be able to move forward, uh, without those pieces? Or doing those on a parallel track, uh, with, uh, more, more secure, more, um, you know, well-defined funding? And as well as getting us back on something closer to our original timeline? I know it's only a couple of months, but, uh, you know, if something, say, say if the, um, the analysis that's being done by the, the Army Corps of Engineers turns up some other artifacts in the area, and then that could lead to other delays. And so I'm wondering, could the building itself be decoupled? Is it really tied to all of these other things? And is there any way to adjust for that?
Sure. Uh, let me take the first part of that, and Kelly just popped in, uh, because she knew I was going to point to her, uh, for, for, for the sequel part. Michael, all valid questions. Uh, a few minutes ago, staff reminded me that the fifty million dollar budget was actually set in twenty-fifteen, right? It was set through a community listening campaign and cost models from twenty-fifteen. So now that we're talking about actually constructing a building in twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three, uh, that has to be taken into consideration. Um, and, you know, we could sort of go back on, uh, the process over the last five years, but part of it is just that, that, that time. The other, uh, part is, you're, you're absolutely right. There were a number of exterior enhancements to the park that were added. Nearly all were stripped away when we value engineered this building, uh, over the last two years, uh, going from schematic design to construction documents. The two most significant things that remained were realigning the creek to, um, address a safety issue with the current creek that floods and in, in the, in the middle of parking. That is also connected with, we are building a larger building, uh, and there are parking thresholds, and so we needed additional parking spaces. And so that gives that your other question of, can we decouple some of the, uh, realignment of City Parkway, uh, and parking from the building? Part of, the answer to that is no. Um, what Kelly's probably going to tell you more articulately, uh, and, um, is that once you do the sequel filing, the project is the project. Uh, and, uh, we are currently going through that process. And so Kelly, do a better job at it.
I think you did great. Um, so in terms of decoupling the building from the creek, unfortunately, that's just not something that the Corps will do. They really do think of the project holistically. Um, and I think even if, if we found some way to not relocate the creek, which I think everyone can agree that relocating the creek is the right thing to do from like a water quality perspective, a safety perspective, from all kinds of, um, vantage points, I think that we would still be in the same situation with the archaeological, um, sensitivity, now that that's a known factor. Um, and we also had a really good conversation with the Corps. Um, I think we're all on the same page, and I don't anticipate that really driving delays at this point. The one last item that I will mention is that, um, the roundabout installation or the signalization of the intersection is actually, um, part of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and is required by the project's EIR to mitigate a traffic impact, um, at that intersection.
Okay. All right, thank you. I, I had to ask the question, and, you know, I, I've actually been asking for, um, the, the creek relocation since before we even talked about this project. I mean, that's always been a concern of mine, so I, I was actually really happy to see that that was going to be included. Um, but just in terms of trying to move this ahead, I was just wondering. Um, and, you know, and just listening to all of the potential, um, sources of, of funding for this, I, I don't think any of them are really, um, ideal. Uh, and, and I, you know, as was mentioned previously, uh, there are a lot of competing demands for those funds, and so it, it would be, it would be difficult to figure out which other projects don't get funded so that we can move forward with this. This is going to be amazing for the city, uh, but at the same time, uh, we don't actually have a lot of, um, uh, we have no shortage of, of other projects. So, uh, I appreciate the answer on that. Uh, and one final question related, again, to the realignment, um, since it's something that has to be included. Um, I'm wondering, in, in the, um, the overhead view that we saw, it looks like the roadway is dramatically narrowed going through the park, which I think is, is a really good idea. Uh, there's a lot of speeding that happens through the park, and there's been a lot of concerns about, uh, safety, that, that, you know, children crossing that roadway. Um, I, I noticed that the, um, the pathways that, that are drawn out, and I know this is probably really preliminary at this point, but the pathways still seem to divert people to the curved sections of the roadway where there's probably less visibility for cars coming around. And so I'm wondering if that was taken into consideration in terms of the, the safety in crossing, um, City Parkway? If where we, those little pathways empty out, or they hit the street and come across, are we, um, you know, taking the, the visibility of the cars that are coming through there into consideration? And are we anticipating a slower, uh, flow of traffic through there because it's narrower?
Oh, I can start, um, answering that question, and others, please feel free to chime in. So, um, we actually did have, um, the city traffic engineer look at the site distance, um, and we've actually relocated them to their current positions, the pedestrian crosswalks, as well as the drive aisle entrances into the parking lot, to distance those further from the future roundabout or signaled intersection at City Parkway in Crystal Springs. Um, so that has definitely been taken into consideration. Um, those will also be marked pedestrian crosswalks.
And I think just additionally, um, so the curving of the road is also intentional in that it is traffic calming as well. And so the straighter and the wider the road, the faster you drive. And so, um, putting in those gentle curves in addition to the designated crosswalks, um, was also part of the strategy from, um, traffic engineers' input as well as landscape architects.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, seeing no other hands up, uh, again, thank you for the report and update, and thank you, Council for, I'm sorry, Councilmember Davis.
Hmm, sorry about that. I was actually really waiting for everybody to comment because you and I have been on the subcommittee, so we've been getting updates all along. You know, this, this presentation, um, was really, I think, very challenging for everybody because there's been so much work put into this project. And it seems like every few months, um, we come back together and we get an update, and there's some other detour that these guys have to work through and another challenge. And, and every single time, they're coming up with additional solutions and how we can work through it, and how we can work on other, other pieces of it so we don't delay the project. Um, that has happened at every turn that we make. There, there are so many details that, that's, you know, staff doesn't have the time tonight to go through, throughout this project, that I, I'm just overwhelmed on the amount of requirements that you have on a project this size. Um, and so somebody will always ask, God, when is that project, when is that new facility ever going to get built? When is that new facility ever going to get built? And, yeah, it's a painstaking process, and I think that this team has done an excellent job. Um, honestly, we, we got on, um, on, on with this project way before Jovan was ever even on, um, this project as a city manager, and we kind of had to reset again with sort of new staff and new members coming on, including Keith, our finance director, and, um, the Joanne, who was, uh, uh, the Park Recations. And so, and there's even new people today. But along those, those hurdles, they've stayed focused, and they continue to make progress. Um, and, and always cease to amaze me. Um, at every single one of the meetings, we have representatives as city council members, representatives from Park Rec Commission, representative from, um, also the Planning Commission, and we always come out with sort of a unified, uh, support and feedback for this team and the work that they're doing. So although in a very short amount of time, the presentation really couldn't show it tonight, there's so much work that's gone in behind the scenes. Um, you know, just picking bathroom tiles or floor tiles is, is a process we've all gone through to get to where we're at. Picking wall color, we, we've had disagreements on the gym colors and, and the seating and the lighting and the this and that, so much work is done. It takes really a, a village to, to come together and to think about all the pieces. Um, and I remember in the very beginning, and, and honestly, it was a time when Jovan saw my mouth drop, and that is, fifty million isn't going to get us a community room. Fifty million isn't going to get us an outdoor pool. Fifty million is not going to get us an, an, um, raised track. And I just felt that these were things, and I think the other members did, that these are kind of really important things. That, you know, having a, a place where people can safely, whether it's elderly people or children, walk twelve months out of the year in a gymnasium and get some exercise, which is so important for the health of so many people. Um, that they won't worry about trips from the roots on the ground or the steps or the sidewalk, et cetera, that they can actually get some really well, well-needed exercise. Um, the community room that can bring our city together in so many different ways for a facility that doesn't exist in San Bruno, um, that, that is, that will be that nice, um, outside of the senior center. And the exercise room, it, it was a last-minute, um, decision, and I think that it's a good decision at while we're in it and we're doing it, that we spend that money now because it, it'll really save us in the long run. And, and there are a number of things from the generator to the solar, um, that I think should need to come, because if we find ways to put them off because we don't have the funding today, they will always cost us double and triple the cost down the road, or never happen at all. So I, I see how challenging this is. I think the most challenging thing is going to really be for city manager, is really figuring out and presenting a way to fund this that will be, um, something that we as all council members or future council members can actually support. Um, I hear us go back to the Measure G funding again, and I really hate to hear that. I understand it was important for COVID, um, and it was a unique situation, but Measure G was really earmarked for those things and improving, um, our city facilities through streets and roads and, and different things, and sidewalks, say, and, and fire mitigation. I think those are priorities, and this is not a priority for that, that kind of thing. So kudos to team, Dawn, and, um, and, and you're, you know, there's a group of people that we've all worked with. Um, fabulous job and, and great presentation, and, and doing, um, a really tremendous job in sort of explaining the new building, the design. It's exciting, and we are getting there, we are getting close, and so I can't wait to see groundbreaking.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your, your comments, and, and like was said too, whether it's the, the rec center's been deemed historical, which delayed it, the, uh, Army of Engineers delayed it. So some of the things are out of our control. I think there's about eight different agencies that have to review and sign off on this before we can get to the next step. Um, I think, and again, the city manager has alluded to this, that this is something that comes back to the council as a whole. When we, when we, when we talk about where do we want to go in revenue sources? And it's not that any X, in my world, X hasn't been divided from the impact fees to this. However, in the impact fees, there are buckets, and that's what I think he was alluding to, that there was a potential of using some of that. But that comes back to this council, uh, those, that will make those decisions. So I want to thank, uh, uh, staff for the, uh, report and updating the council. Uh, with nothing else at this time, thank you again for all. I'm sorry?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, uh, before we close out, Audrey Jones Taylor, uh, has been, uh, she's in the center of my screen, and, and, and her, her video is up. She stepped in, uh, as the project manager in May, when the community services director left. And so I just want to acknowledge her because frankly, she's the one behind the scenes, uh, pushing and driving the team, uh, and is, is really why we have not lost the beat, uh, over these last, uh, four months, uh, when we had a, a change in shift and shift. So she came in having experience with building large, uh, uh, facilities and running them. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of the entire team, and I, and I know we didn't acknowledge you earlier on, and so, uh, my bad, but thank you.
Thank, thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Audrey.